At this time, I'd like to call the Monday, February 11th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting to order. That brings us to the first item on the agenda, which is roll call. Daniels, Gesmi.
Here.
Hema.
Here.
And Dee Lundell.
Here.
That's Derek, right?
Yes.
Wonderful. Gee Lundell. Pid.
Eric Witt.
Here. And Mr. Witt just walked in. That brings us to number three, which is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to approve the agenda.
I've got a motion by Mr. Hema.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Gesmi. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to the approval of the minutes from the January 14th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting.
I move to approve the minutes.
Second it.
I've got a motion by Derek Lundell and a second by Mr. Hema. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Please approach the microphone and before speaking, please give your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. Anyone here for something other than what's already on the agenda? Alright, that brings us to the public hearing for the zoning ordinance amendment relocating structures. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing.
So, some background on this. This is an amendment to the ordinance that was directed by the Planning Commission to have staff do this at the last meeting. We're just amending the zoning ordinance requirement for relocating structures into the city of Cannon Falls. Currently, the zoning code requires a conditional use permit be obtained if you are going to move a structure over 200 square feet onto a vacant property. We are looking to amend this to require an administrative permit. That way, a public hearing would not be required and it would save applicants time and money. And everything that is required in the ordinance currently would still be required to be presented to myself as staff. It just wouldn't have to come through Planning Commission and Council.
One question.
Yeah.
Would it take two members of staff to sign it off then, or just one?
Just one.
One, so the mayor doesn't sign it off or anything like that to just cross check?
No, but yeah, it would just be checking that they have everything provided. Then they would also have to get a building permit from Good Hugh County, so they would check every...
So that's your accountability is the building permit?
Yep. Yes.
Think that's adequate?
Yes.
You don't see any problems in the future of that?
No, I don't foresee any problems. The structures that are typically moved in, if they're manufactured in a factory, kind of prefabricated structures, are held to really high standards. I've been to a few seminars and things with my job with Good Hugh County doing building permits. They have inspectors that go through those. They'll have to provide information to the building official for Good Hugh County. They'll come out and inspect when they install it on site and everything like that. When it comes to the administrative side, they'll have to coordinate with our Public Works Director and Chief of Police for a date and time when they can actually be moving these structures on the streets. Load requirements, time of day is important. Typically, they're moved at night. If it's a structure that has, I call them pre been lived in before, it's not coming straight out of a factory. The State of Minnesota Building Code requires that the building official go to and see this structure before it comes into the city to inspect it for all of the requirements of the building code.
You've answered my question. I'm just wondering, you know, if an elected official should still initial it off.
Mm-hmm. And I can add that to the administrative permit, but typically administrative means staff.
Yeah.
And that's how all the other administrative permits are done.
I'm okay with...
Okay.
Do we have any public input? You must be Jordan. Alright, at this time, I'd like to close the public hearing for the zoning ordinance amendment relocating structures. That brings us to discussion item, Resolution 2019-2 zoning ordinance amendment relocating structures. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass the resolution.
Yeah, I'll second it.
I've got a motion by Derek Lundell and a second by Mr. Hema. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to discussion item B, Jordan Erickson Countryside Disposal Proposal.
I'll start things off and then I'll let Jordan answer questions that you may have. So Jordan Erickson here is the owner, operator of Countryside Disposal. I'm sure you've seen his trucks, his service that comes through Cannon Falls. He's looking to kind of establish a home base, he called it to me, in the city of Cannon Falls at 124 Washington Street. So this is Washington Street here, also known as County Road 17. Here's the Henkel Business, Cannon Equipment, Amesbury. And this building and lot is currently vacant. It used to be a welding shop. Jordan's interested in purchasing the property and using it for storage of his trucks, dumpsters. Everything would always be empty. There would be no trash or anything there at any time. And maybe doing some minor repairs of his trucks in the building that's on site. So, the zone that this is in is limited industrial, so this is a conditional use in that zone. So Jordan is just coming here to get your input thoughts on what you would maybe want him to bring forward in a permit application if he decides to move forward with that, if you are comfortable with this use here. He's here to answer any questions you may have before he moves forward investing his time and money in this project. So I will turn it over to Jordan if you have any questions for him.
Sam, what would it have to be? Of permit or conditional use?
Conditional use, so I can throw that up here too. So the first one I would do, I would say that he would have to do is automobile repair and it'd be minor repair. It would only be going on in that building there. As you can see, there's just requirements for landscaping, screening from residential districts. That's already in place. If you were to go drive by that building today, there's quite a few trees and everything that is blocking the building from the residential district that was next to it, as well as any other properties. The other things don't really apply. He's not going to be selling motor fuel. He's not going to be doing much, if any, painting. Flammable materials has to abide by the fire codes. Noise provisions are something we can discuss if that's something you want to discuss with him about hours of operation, things like that. And then the biggest thing is going to be this open and outdoor storage. It's not going to be a sales lot, obviously. You can't see some of my notes there, but same thing about the landscaping, it exists. We'd have to have some sort of, in the conditional use permit, the council would have to approve it to remain gravel. It is gravel currently. So it would just have to be added to that. There is already, there's a gate that separates the front from the rear where he would be actually storing the items, the trucks and the dumpsters. It's not going to be located in a front yard. Number six, not abutting property for residential use. I'm working, or I would be working with the city attorney on, because there's provisions for screening, saying how do these, these kind of cancel each other out almost, so working on it. This happens in our zoning ordinance quite a bit where things contradict each other. But in my opinion, this is something that Jordan can do. It's just a conditional use permit. So, like I said, just looking for some input from all of you on some, if you have any questions, he's here.
So would this be your new, like the main office or just a storage type place?
Yeah, I'd like to set up shop entirely. Some they have an office, but right now it is mainly to store equipment and be able to work on trucks indoors.
Okay. About how many trucks?
We got three right now.
Okay.
So, and we're growing, so.
Where is the, where's the outline of the property? Is it that dark?
Um, yeah, it's...
Okay, it's up there. I wasn't sure.
Right there.
Yeah.
Quite, there's quite a berm here already and, you know, a lot of trees besides.
But a visual barrier as well as a berm? I mean, is there a fence on it or?
I, I mean, it, it's quite a hill. I haven't walked all the way up it or nothing. I don't know if there's an actual fence up there. It's, it's quite thick really for in town.
Yeah, yeah. Lot of cedars.
How large is the property?
I think it's a little over three acres, if I remember correctly.
So, straight north of the, the building there, does that, is that flat all the way back to the property line? Because I know they, they hauled a bunch of fill out of there. I don't know how far they got.
I, I think this is Gemini's land, right?
Yeah, that is. Yeah, that's clearly there.
I'm not sure what they've done.
But I mean, is that, is that all to the same grade as the...
As back here?
No. If you go right to the back of the building, okay, now are you, are you flat all the way to the north?
Yeah, yep, it's quite, this is, I'd say this, probably half of it here is all about the same. And then as you go east, it rises.
Yeah, okay. What kind of utilities are on that property?
Everything that I know of.
You got sewer, water?
Water, yep, electric.
Yeah, pretty sure they've got three phases in there too, so.
Yeah.
That'd help for fixing.
Because they had sewer in there.
Yep, yeah, he's got bathrooms in there already and so.
It's a... How many vehicles can you get in that building? Couple?
Yeah, it's definitely two garbage trucks if not.
High enough that you can get that garage door high enough? The building's high enough?
Yeah, it's 14 foot doors, you can get any vehicle in there, so.
How many bins would you have?
I don't want many there. I'd like them out of customers' places, but, you know, it all varies on one order and how fast you can move them and stuff like that, so.
Yeah. Have you talked to any of the neighbors at all? I recall it was, I don't know who had the problem, if it was Cannon Equipment or Henkel. There were odor complaints in that area for quite a while. And not, and I believe it was possibly out of Cannon Equipment or Henkel, I'm not sure which. That's the only thing I'd be concerned about is you're going to have people that are going to get on you on odors.
Yeah, I mean, we dump the trucks daily and...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Doesn't do us any good to have...
So no storage of, of waste or hazardous materials?
No, we don't haul any hazardous materials.
Possible it could, you know, be, sit there for a couple hours before you got it out or something like that or...
If you broke down or something.
Yeah, if you had a vehicle that just had to sit overnight or something.
Yeah.
But the idea is they're, they're going to be empty at night.
Empty at the end of the day, all the time, so.
It's...
So what, what would be our next step, Sam?
So the next step is if Jordan is comfortable with what you guys are saying tonight, he applies for a conditional use permit with me and I get all his information together and he comes back next month on March 11th and applies for the conditional use permit.
So there'll be a public hearing then?
Yep, so there'll be a public hearing. All of those neighbors would get notices. And they could come and make their statement for or against or indifferent about what he's proposing. And it would be just like any other conditional use permit. It'd be up to you all to recommend something to the council.
Yes, one thing I could see neighbors asking about is real early morning or real late nights. I think there's probably enough of a barrier there, but just in case, like what time do you guys get going in the morning?
Yeah, we typically start at 6:00 AM.
Yeah.
Good day is like a 10 hour day, but if, you know, some run a little behind or something, so I'd say 6:00 to 6:00 would be...
Yeah. Okay.
The shop might be open all night, you know, if you have to. Whatever it takes, keep it going, right?
Yeah, to an extent, you know.
Yeah.
In mind of noise and all that.
Be aware of any additional lighting that you're going to put on it.
I don't plan on doing much.
At this point, later on.
Maybe just something by the door, you know.
You're not going to have gravel across the whole property? Gravel surfaces around it or?
Yeah, there's gravel, I'd say pretty much all that. Because he's got a little, it's like a three sided shed here and there's gravel all the way back to that, so.
Been back there for a while.
Place has been empty for a while.
What happens when you, you have to wash those out once in a while? What happens then? Does that all go right down the sewer? Units when you clean them up, keep them going, huh?
You're there not the customer.
I'm just curious.
We typically, I mean, clean it, put it in the garbage truck, you know, get everything out of the container and get it in the garbage truck before, like rinse it out or something.
So the sewer system should be able to handle washing mud and stuff down the, down the sewer?
Mainly water.
Should be water, yeah.
Whatever, but, crazy, so.
Agent oil, so you have... What do you usually do? Use, use barrels to store your oil waste and?
Right now I've got like a tote. It's like a 275 gallon tote cut on a pallet.
And that gets filled, you get rid of it? Or do they come and pick it up?
Yeah.
Is there a limit on the size of, of petroleum based products you can have on the property?
That would be up to the fire code. So it's in the conditional, conditional use.
Yeah.
I would, if he applies for it, I would just check with our fire chief.
So you know what your limits are there?
Yeah, exactly.
Don't want to accidentally overstep it.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I'm, I've seen them use other places. That's where I got the idea from, I guess. I don't know if it's up to this code, but...
Okay. Diesel trucks? Thanks. Looks like fun. Lot of work.
Yeah.
You said you wouldn't be storing fuel on the property?
Um, I wouldn't be selling fuel on the property.
Okay.
I may consider getting a fuel barrel for my equipment.
Fuel and bulk? Kind of heating do you have in there, by the way? You got a propane tank?
It's radiant heating in the shop.
Uh-huh.
Yep.
Radiant heating.
They got anything? Well, I know as far as flambos go, that one right to the left has plenty.
By somewhere is there?
Henkel, yeah. I, I worked there a long time ago when I was Burquist. I got to haul the big flammable drums off the truck. So I know there's a ton of them in storage there.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I'd just be, you know, there'll be people asking about odors and stuff.
Yeah, I suppose if you know what's in there.
I think it's just we get big enough that that's a problem taken out then, huh?
The problem to have.
No problem now.
Where do you store everything now?
Probably my home. Out of that and set up an office and have a place now that we got employees this year, so.
So, everyone kind of feel like that's probably a, a good use for that piece of property?
I think so. I think it'd be great use for it.
I think it would, yeah, I think it would. I think it would, yeah, I think it would fit in alright.
I don't, do we have to vote on anything? Do we just, or just?
No, not tonight.
Just a general?
Yeah, it was just a general conversation.
Yep.
Trying to give him some feedback. That way, he can come, come with what he needs to make it happen.
Well, I think you should continue on with the application, but just remember the neighbors are gonna, are all going to be notified that...
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
That'd be curious.
It may be.
Yeah.
I've, I've only seen two big things since I've been here. Chickens, that was a big deal.
Oh, urban chickens. What is that, what does an urban chicken look like?
Yeah, I, I don't know. I must be a little more hip than a farm chicken, I guess.
I guess I must have gotten, I was damaged in my youth with chickens.
The urban chickens.
Took a lot of eggs.
So, yeah, if nobody has any more questions, we can go forward and I think Jordan will come and be here next month for us, so.
I'll start on that.
Alright, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Jordan.
Thanks, Jordan. That brings us to number eight, which is Planning Commission member comments. Anybody got anything? No?
Getting all the snow moved?
Yeah.
Coming again.
That's right here. That brings us to number nine, which is adjourn. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, make a motion to adjourn.
Alright, I got a motion by Mr. Hema.
I'll second.
And I've got a second by Mr. Witt. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes the Monday, February 11th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting.